If you ask my kid what his favorite food is.
At seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting, the order. Your allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approval of agenda, three point one additions, three point one one. Minutes of the special school board meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, six point four, three point one point two, proposed adding volleyball varsity assistant coach to certified masters agreement to start two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five season, eleven point seven. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second. We're excited tonight.
You see, Katie, is there any questions on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Four, public forum.
None.
None. Five presentations, we have the aerobots want to present to us. Welcome.
Thank you. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
These are some incredible people. They're four, four team members right now that have over a hundred dollars since January sixth.
Wow.
After school, Saturday. So yeah, that's pretty incredible.
Awesome.
I'm Bailey. I'm the team captain.
I'm David. I'm the volunteer.
I'm Christopher.
I'm Owen. I do wiring.
Cool.
I'm the aerobots.
That's okay.
These are programs.
Team thirty-two ninety-eight was founded in two thousand ten. And we're going to pop up and show you all the previous team members that from two thousand ten. And the tops of them are different game shows, the titles, what they're called.
Definitely growing.
It kind of does this.
Yeah, but that's.
Like this year we had quite a few start, and then they realize what kind of commitment it is, and then plus they have jobs and such and such.
So this year's planner policy for the grandola is the game, the name of the game here is pro sendo. And that will be out in Grand Forest, North Dakota. And our competition, our competition days are March seventh through the ninth. And we will be leaving on March sixth at six thirty a.m. from Grand Forest.
Don't like the movie.
About First Robotics, the group professionalism is part of the ethos of First. It's a way of doing things that encourages high quality work, but it's about the value of others and respects and measures of gracious attitudes, or gracious attitudes and behaviors are many gracious folks who respect others and have respect shown their actions, professional position, possesses special knowledge and are trusted by society to use that knowledge responsibly. Gracious professionals who make and value the pressure and manner of using tools as an aim and a purpose.
This is our picture from competition last year. This is our robot. And this is when we tripled.
This one, this was in the finals, right?
Yeah, this was in the finals, which we placed fourth in our.
That was, that was our robot in that, our first competition in Duluth. We, we had a completely different robot and it didn't really work. So in two weeks, we built a whole entire new robot. And all during all that time, he brought just one of us to stay later nights and Saturday's coming earlier. It's a lot of work.
How long does a robot normally take to?
We usually have long weeks to do it and then also the competition over brand new.
Our build season is from, from probably January sixth up until our whatever competition we go into. And then we can make tweaks on like if we're in between competitions and all that.
So it took you like nine months.
Yeah.
When, when we started this, the, the first Saturday in, in January, you would go and pick up your parts. And then you have six weeks. And at the end of that six weeks, by midnight that night, you have to put it in this big bag and tag it off. And then write it down and have somebody sign it so that they could, you know, verify that, you know, you put work in there. And then, you know, as, as it progressed on, and forty-four years ago maybe, they kind of got rid of the bag and tag. And like, I think they realized that there were some teams that had built two robots, bagged one, and then made their robot work really well. And then, because you were allowed to bring in like thirty-five pounds of parts with you. So like if it was a climbing arm or what, you know, so they would get that down really good. And our, when we started, we were like, no, we don't know. It's like, you know, I will and you will, and that's all we need to do. So it's, it's been, it's been a good one.
Um, this is the story after our match two. What, that's on? And that's the first match we won, I think, or?
No, because we were.
Oh.
This was later.
That was our second. That was a good number.
It's okay, little guys. You're fine.
Um, sponsorship money. Each year, our team goes out and solicits donations, solicit donations from local businesses in the area. These donations help pay for our parts, our equipment, special things needed for our robot that are here like climbing law and stuff like that. I also pay for hotel rooms, one team meal at each competition. And we're very thankful that our community is very generous to us and they give us the money and help us with what we need.
A lot of, a lot of the people are devoted to us, like they like this and they want us, you know, they, they really been committed to us.
First in Minnesota. First Robotics has a widely expanded from two teams in two thousand six to two hundred and twenty-four in two, uh, twenty-twenty. More than four thousand eight hundred and fifty students were actively involved in Minnesota's teams. And sixty-three, sixty-three point two percent of Minnesota high schools students. At two hundred and thirty-one schools affiliated with those teams have access to First Robotics.
Robotics is a sport. Robotics was established as a varsity sport by the Minnesota High School State League in two thousand twelve. Same as it is a sport means that the school supports and advances development of the cooperation. And skill for the student athletes robotics is a great option for students that want to join an extracurricular activity.
Uh, I'm like this, um, we have seen like in the past how other sports have been like made more important than ours. Especially like you say, like football and stuff, that we don't really get as much, um, light shined on us. Even though we do put a lot of our work into what we do and stuff.
What grade, what grade do you kind of start being on robotics?
Ninth.
Ninth grade. Okay.
This is the number that we are, we, we, we're supplying transportation, covering expensive field. And also having, don't there is a new one competition entry fee, state national box.
Is that also a?
So where, where this came, came from back when we first started this, Wendy School Beast was the chair at that time. And she said, you know, as long as we have robotics team, we're going to, you know, we're going to deal with it. And then last year, you know, when we come back from Denver, it was, well, Logan's dad took four days off of work. And all of a sudden, it was, well, the robotics team needs to pay for his meals. I don't know, the school can't pay for the meals. He's not a coach. And it's, you know, upset me quite a bit. So we, we just kind of put this in. And we were really close to making it to nationals. And it wasn't said that I'm glad you didn't make it, but it, it did come across that I just don't know how the school would ever afford to send you there if you were to make it. And, you know, it's like.
Although we can provide rest in hotel rooms at state, I saw center, football hotel rooms for state and south.
So we're, we're just trying to get a full commitment to say, you know, this is what we're going to do in, in the one competition entry fee. We take care of the first one. You like Medtronics this year donated us forty-five hundred dollars. We took care of the other fifteen hundred to pay for to get into the first competition. The second competition, I believe, used to be five thousand and now they dropped it down to four thousand. So that was what we'd always just dealt, you know, whatever the second competition was. This year, they restructured the way things work. So we only got into one competition. We didn't get the second. But on Saturday, uh, we were lucky enough to have something finished because they had a week zero and longer. And they charged a hundred and seventy-five dollars to come up and use their fields and setups. And, you know, our team took care of that. And, uh, Rick said that, you know, don't worry, we'll take care of your travel. That's fine. Because we don't have the second competition. And it was, it was a great experience. Brady Dunn was, he's, he's new on the team. And we go into like one, one of their gyms up there, they've got a, you know, there's twenty-nine robots there. And he was just like, oh God, I'm kind of nervous. This is pretty big. And I go, this is nothing. You know, when you go to the actual competition, there's sixty robots and there's, you know, teams that have fifty, sixty, seventy kids on their team. And then, you know, parents and, you know, their, their siblings. I said, there might be three to five thousand people sitting in this stand. He's like, oh God. But it is, when, when you're at a competition, it's incredible. You know, like Duluth, there's two competitions at one time. So a hundred and twenty robots in that building. And, I mean, it's just packed with people all the way down. So, you know, you, this will be something you guys can decide on. We don't know it. We don't need an answer anymore. But it's just something that after last year, I just wanted to bring it up. I used to have kids, parents on the board and kids that were on the team. And, uh, when I was talking to Rick, he's like, well, you don't have, you don't have them anymore. I'm like, you know, you're right. You know, we need to come back and introduce us and, you know, get everybody back up and what we do and what's fun they have.
I guess I don't remember you guys coming and asking for money last year. Oh, okay. That's why I was, I.
And there was, there was a lot of headbutting over that. And it's like, you know, this is the way it's been done forever.
Yeah.
Went back in and it was never putting minutes back, you know, when Wendy was here. But I know her and Jim went back and forth about it. And, and he's like, well, don't you want to discuss this? And she goes, no, I ain't giving a variable robotics team. We need to take care of them.
I, I guess I would agree that whatever we do for other sports, we should be doing for robotics. That's just my, that's my, that's my thing.
I'm with that too. I mean, you're out raising money and other extracurriculars out raising money too.
It'd be nice to get something in writing.
Okay.
Because I've dealt with this for a long time.
Okay, um, do we have a, uh, what we do for like volleyball and they go to state?
No, that's just it.
It's just no matter what.
Nothing. So.
Then maybe we'll have to sit down with Rick.
Should we pay for one competition? Should we pay for three? Like this year, only going one. And I'm not saying what's right or wrong.
It shouldn't.
You just need to get something in writing.
I would agree.
So we don't have to go through this all the time, administration changes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I would agree, maybe Rick should maybe in the extracurricular committee.
This is kind of on its own. You can't really compare it to a sport. You really can't compare it that way. It's kind of.
Right. That's what I would say. It's more like.
So if you get something in writing, so we don't have to go through this every time we change.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
I still always end up in the middle.
I think we should refer to our extracurricular, through our extracurricular committee and have them make up some type of. Mr. D, is the competitions, um, entry fees different for each one?
The, the, the first one to get into is six thousand dollars. And we've been fortunate, you know, Medtronics now sponsors this, but they used to sponsor us the whole way. And now, you know, like last year, they went five thousand, so we paid the extra thousand. This year, they went forty-five. So, you know, we had U of M sponsors before. We had NASA sponsoring us.
So is it typical, it's six, six grand for?
The first one's six. And the second one's, they, since they bumped the first one to six, they dropped the second one to four. And then any one that you go after that's four, four thousand dollars. And we, uh, one year, the year of COVID, we, I told the kids that they raised enough money that we'd get into a third one. And so they raised enough money. So we were going to go to Idaho. And then COVID hit and canceled them out. They were, you know, like, we're forcing us out.
I'm sure.
But you know, like, the, the regional competition is where you qualify for state. And typically, the, I think it's the top twenty-four robots in the state is where that qualifies. And, uh, that was the nice thing about having two competitions because we hardly ever got to the point where we would come close to qualifying for state. But, you know, just like last year, you go up, you know, you've built this incredible machine and it doesn't work. So then you've got, you know, two weeks to either try to fix what you had or last year, scrap everything and start from scratch again. Because now you've actually seen everything work. You know what's working, what's not working. And, yeah, yeah, they, two weeks they. I was like this.
We had a, we had.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did a good job of it. And, you know, like the, the national competition is, if we, we were to want in Denver, then you get your ride to, you know, then you're into the national competition. I think last year, well, there's two different, one, I think ours is down in Texas. So that's, you know, just one of the things that, you know, a dream of ours is to make state and nationals. But, you know, we're, there's a lot of teams out there that have, you know, thirty mentor engineer, you know, coders on their teams mentoring kids. And, you know, I'm more, here's what the competition is. What do you want to build? If you're getting a little off track, I'll try to get you back on. But, you know, in the end, if we go up and, you know, we went to Duluth, we left, they were pretty bummed out and, you know, and I was like, well, we know what we have and we'll go to Denver. So either what are we going to do to fix it or what's our plan? And before we got back from Duluth, they had sketched out new, you know, this is what we want to do. And, and so, you know, I mean, that way it's important. And when, and when you go to these competitions, if, if something breaks on your robot, you can go up to the announcer's table and, you know, say, uh, you know, we have a wheel break on the robot. We're going to have to spare it. You've got ten teams coming over. You know, here, 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 you know, and, uh, we were just out against you and we noticed you broke. And, you know, is, is there any way we can help you out? Or, you know, we're up against you next time. We want your robot to be good when it comes out. How can we help? So, you know, that part of the whole competition is really awesome.
Do you guys do, um, like demonstrations for the younger kids at school?
We try.
Okay.
Jennifer's going to get a whole.
Cause I think that would be a way to really get, get it out there to kids and to, you know, make them aware that this is something that we're even doing.
Well, yeah, I know when student teacher conferences used to be around, when I was in middle school, that's how I found about robotics. And like seeing the robot race around the hallway and seeing, seeing my teachers, I used to tell my dad how excited I was to be able to do that when I was in high school.
Yeah.
So.
I just think it's cool to start planting that seed early. And, and maybe that would give you guys a little more exposure too. You know, if these kids know that, you know, and I know that you've sent out the links and stuff, which, you know.
And we, we tried to get into Water Tower, the Water Tower parade. We, we might depend on what the weather looks like or not, we might try to get into like Stacy's parade at Woodstock. And, you know, and we set up some things with the live wall, like in the library was here, we'd set up a, and, you know, when they had their open. They have to pay when lots of people came in.
Yeah.
We'd have our robots set up and we'd run everything half speed. And when kids would come in, you know, it was, it was a lot of fun.
That's some, oh, and I think that's something you probably could still do, you know, on a, I mean, our library could be open for a certain amount of time for parents or kids or whatever to come in, I think. I mean, I don't say anything wrong with that, I guess, still. Should have to do a little advertising.
My little brother in hospital, he's at the actual school in Lakeview, and he actually gone to the first robotics because he saw one of our games. And then somebody goes on to do that trial and get it back.
Yeah, cool.
Ben?
Happy school board appreciates you, Ben.
Thank you. Awesome.
And we, and we do appreciate it.
Yep.
Well, thanks for.
Very good presentation.
There we go.
Thanks for coming out.
We'll kind of hang out and then when we're done, we can.
Awesome.
Take you to show you. I'm a, I'm a poor driver, just so they go.
Awesome.
And I think what I said on that last year, when we got, when we went down to Denver, the laptop that I take with me to do my schoolwork on.
Oh boy.
Is the same laptop that we were programming on last year.
Oh.
So when we left, I come up with my laptop and we switched over to joysticks last year, or the, the game controller instead of joysticks. So you always knew you had the computer because your joysticks were out. So I come out and we get in, we leave and we get down to Denver and we unload and Bailey, hey, can I get the computer up here? Opens up the suburban and she, she goes, Lee, did you leave it down at the, at the venue? No, I, I didn't have the computer. I thought she was going to fall over dead. Seven forty-five, we want to cross the street to Best Buy, bought this laptop and she stayed up for nine hours.
I met the team.
So it was, it was an eventful trip. But, you know, that's, that's part of it is, you know, once they get into it, they never quit.
Good.
I look back like Bradley Willie from his first year, he was a freshman. We get down in the car and I said, I don't know if I'll go next year. So, don't worry, you'll be back. Oh, you know, that's, boy, open house. And when everybody comes in and gets their stuff the first day, you can, what do you think we're going to be doing for robotics this year? I know it. I know it. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Very good.
So do we need to do something right now? We have to, we have to get something on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So we can't, okay.
Okay. We'll move on to number six, the consent agenda. Six point one, approved minutes of the regular school board meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Six point two, approved minutes of the school board organizational meeting, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Six point three, approved minutes of the special school board meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Six point four, approved minutes of the special school board meeting on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Six point five, personnel report. Action required, new subs, contracts, resignations or volunteers, other personnel items potentially brought forward for approval. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second.
First and second. Is there any questions? If not, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, number seven, we'll go into the financials, seven point run. Oh, yeah, we got two teachers retiring. Todd Tinklinburg, thirty-three and a half years, and Bev Slinger, forty-two years. Good luck to them and thanks for the service to the school district. Now we'll go to number seven. Thanks, Deb. Seven point run, review of budget year to date. Jackie? Let's be flawed.
Budget year to date, and this actually has the amended budget, which has, I know has not been approved yet, but I wasn't going to do it too. So if it's not approved, then I'll have to go back and do a different one. But we're currently at fifty-four percent. And last year, at this time, we're at fifty-five percent.
Anybody got any questions for Jackie? We'll go on to seven point two, approved treasures report for January two thousand twenty-four.
We're currently have eight point six million dollar cash balance. Last year at this time, we had eight point one. We are still getting really good interest rates on our investments, which is nice to see. I've, I've been told they may start going down. This is from PMA, which they know way more than I do. But we'll wait and see.
Okay. Questions for Jackie, anybody? Do I have a motion to approve the treasures report for January twenty twenty-four?
Some.
So second?
Second.
Got first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Seven point three, approved two thousand twenty-three A bonds treasures report for January two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, the current balance in the bond account is two point eight million dollars. Two million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents at the end of January.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three A bonds treasure report?
Some moved.
So second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Seven point four, approve regular bills for February of two thousand twenty-four. Anybody got any questions for Jackie or anything? Everybody's good? Okay. Do I got a motion to approve the regular bills for February of two thousand twenty-four?
Some moved. Second.
Got first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Seven point five, approve high school activity bills for February of two thousand twenty-four. Anybody got any questions on that? Everybody's good? Okay, do I got a motion, or a motion to approve it?
Some moved.
At first, I have a second?
Second.
The first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, seven point six, approve payment of two thousand twenty-three A bond bills. Have anything there, Jackie? Or anybody have any questions for Jackie?
I just know that Carl Sanderson approves them and Dr. Willard signs off on them and I make sure they get paid. It's about as much as I know about them.
Good job. Do I have a motion to approve payment of twenty twenty-three A bond bills?
Some moved.
The first is our second?
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. We'll move on to number eight, board forum information. Any eight point one, board reports and updates, anybody?
I haven't went to any board meetings, except the special ones.
I don't think we've had any.
No committee. I went to the district meeting for staff and I thought that was very, done very well. Dr. Willard just had a quick speech. It was very good.
Good. Okay, we'll go to the administration report. We don't have Superintendent Willard here tonight. So we'll go to nine point two, the principals' board report. Who wants to go first?
That would be me.
Okay, Jennifer.
All right. So from the last school board meeting, we went all staff, elementary, middle school and high school. We went to the reunification sites that we have established. And so we kind of got to scope that out and look at that if there was ever an emergency. So we were able to kind of check out both those sites. February is, I love to read month. And so I got my literacy team together and we had some fun things that we got planned. We had our kickoff assembly on February first in the gym. This is where we shared the, all the fun things we have. You can see that we've got several different dress up days. Um, this Wednesday, we have hat day. And then we're going to have our closing ceremony on Friday. I purchased mustaches for all the kids and are going to read the books. And so it's pretty exciting and fun. The teachers are going to have mustaches too. I told them it's a, it's a must. We had an all-day reading event. Uh, kids could wear comfy stuff. They could have a blanket stuffed animal, that sort of stuff. They got to read with another class. And so you can kind of see which classes were paired up and they got to read with those. They got to read with another class and so you can kind of see which classes were paired up and they got to read with those. And they did that throughout the month, so it wasn't just the all-day reading event, they got to kind of pair up with them. Uh, we do have a school-wide, um, reading goal, so if you look kind of outside of the gym, you're gonna see our thermometers there of all the reading that we've been doing. And teachers are keeping track of the minutes read in the school during de-ear time and the read alouds. We have book bingo, so every kid got a bingo card and I have a lot of kids who are at blackout right now, which is so awesome. So at our closing ceremony, we will acknowledge those who've gotten a bingo and then the ones that got blackout are gonna get some prizes. And then of course, our closing ceremony is on Friday. I went to the elementary principals' conference, uh, Wednesday, February seventh through the ninth, that was awesome. It's a great time to get to know some other principals in the area and learn a lot of stuff. Um, we had life touch spring pictures on February fifteenth. Student loan conferences was this past Thursday and boy, it was a huge hit, huge success. A lot of really great feedback from parents, from staff members and even kids, walking out like this is the best day ever and just having teachers talk about the pride that students were taking in the, in their learning that they're doing in the classroom. So that's definitely something we're gonna bring back and I'm excited to send out a, a form to teachers to fill out, just some feedback and then I want to get one out to parents as well. Jump up for heart kicked off today, so we are participating in our wellness week, our kids' heart challenge that started today and it's gonna go through Friday. So kids can, um, raise money for kids' heart challenge. On Friday, we have our terrific kids program and this past month, our teachers completed unit six live letters training. So by the end of the school year, all teachers at the elementary will be letters trained, except for one who just started this year. Um, he'll be in year one and then he'll finish next year. Any questions?
Nope.
You got anything for? Okay, sounds good. We'll move to nine point three, coordinator of C T L and continuous improvement.
Okay, I am rounding out my third full week here in Pipestone and so I've spent the majority of that time just trying to get to know people. Um, I try to be as visible as possible and, um, I'm trying to make connections with kids and really get to, um, learn from my staff, my colleagues and, um, figure out what the district needs, so. I'm enjoying it immensely, it's a blast, yes. And we, yes, I am, I am full steam ahead in terms of the Minnesota REED Act, um, and what that requires for us in the district. And so I have already started working with some other curriculum directors in the area, um, with the co-op, um, where they're, they're really helpful and supportive and fabulous and so I'm excited about the work that I'm able to do here.
Any have any questions? Well, welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Ten discussion items, we have nothing, eleven. We go to eleven point one, resolution accepting donations to the school. We just got this one here Deb?
Uh, no, that's the next one. The cost of the school are two hundred to the wellness room, some price came one thousand dollars from Sons of American Legion for elementary tackle for all, which is a community, and in four terms, that's seven hundred and fifty elementary tackle for all, which is a community.
Okay. Thanks for the donations. I need a motion to accept the donations to the school?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
And most first and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion passes. Eleven point two, resolution accepting donation to high school activities. So here we just had the one, right?
Well, it's not, there's several on there. That's the total that I gave.
Should name them all.
Okay, I have Steve Everett, a hundred dollars, Whip's Auto Sales, fifty dollars, Stan's Electric, fifty dollars, Martinez Contracting, six hundred dollars, K and A Autobody, one hundred, Johnson Waste Management, eight, two hundred and fifty, Pipestone Cruisers, seven hundred and fifty, Christensen Broadcasting, a hundred and fifty dollars, J and S Lobos, thirty dollars, Darbo Foods of Pipestone, three hundred dollars, Pepsi Coal, Bodlin, one hundred, Outlaw Customs, fifty dollars, First State Bank Southwest, five hundred dollars, Windy Ridge Veterinary Clinic, fifty dollars, Stelveneving Plumbing, fifty dollars, Pipestone Publishing, seventy-five dollars, D and T V Market, three hundred dollars, Pipestone Building Materials, two hundred and fifty dollars, G and S Body Shop, one hundred dollars, Dr. Paul Hendrickson, one hundred dollars, Ludolph Bus Service, three hundred dollars, Double D Gravel, two hundred, First Farmers Immersions, fifty dollars, C and B Operations, two hundred dollars, Sunix Harvest Estates, one fifty, Bullmore Lanes, one thousand five hundred dollars, Sioux Valley Energy, a hundred and fifty dollars, First Bank and Trusts, two hundred and fifty, Napa, fifty, R W E, thirty-four, and Kelly Patty, twenty. And that's.
For a total of six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the robotics.
Nice job.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Good job. Really nice. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution accepting donations to high school activities?
Some of them. Second.
First and second, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Uh, eleven point three, M O U regarding application of Earn Sick and Save Time Law for paraprofessionals. Uh, we need a motion to accept.
Is this is the new, the new?
Yeah, this is what we do.
Okay, this is the, okay. But it has to do with the new law that was passed, correct? Yes, that's what I assumed.
Anybody have any more questions, we're good? Can I have a motion to approve the eleven point three and?
Some of them.
Is there a second? Then first and second, and to approve the M O U regarding application of Earn Sick and Save Time Law for paraprofessionals. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion passes. Eleven point four, M O U regarding application of Earn Sick and Save Time for law, time law for secretaries, custodians, tech assistant and accounts payable. Is there a motion for this?
Go ahead, second. Was that you Tyler?
Anthony, Chrissy, any questions, anybody?
I'll let you go next.
Any questions, anybody, are we good? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Eleven point five, approve amendment to the professional services agreement with T S P Incorporated.
Pass up resolution, I want anything twenty-five thousand dollars all over, had to go to the board if it was an amendment.
Change order?
Change order.
Change order, okay.
And, and this is for the track reconstruction?
Anything T S P is doing.
I would say it's everything, yeah.
Everything T S P.
Although it says administration for track reconstruction.
Yeah, it is, say that.
I was, I wasn't having the impression that we had talked about the track reconstruction.
We haven't, because we haven't had a facilities meeting yet.
Yeah. So to me, I would say we, we should probably hold off on that until we have that facility meeting.
Say your piece.
I think, if I remember right from the last facilities meeting, because I just remember someone saying if they already did, and okay, and I don't really know a lot about this, the design work and whatnot, if we decided not to do it, we would still keep that.
Keep the drawings and.
So like what you said, I don't know if it's something that, like you said, you don't think it's been authorized to do, I may disagree with that. But I don't know that for sure. And that's just based upon what was talked about at the last facilities meeting.
I would agree with that, there is the designing that was, those prints are ours and we will have to pay for those.
Two hundred fifty-one thousand, eleven dollars?
But this is what I don't know, I, I have not had any, I mean, you guys can go ahead and, and do whatever you want to do, but I really don't know, that's all I know.
It seems awful expensive for a drawing.
Two hundred sixty-three thousand two. That must be.
I mean, I can try to fight, well, I, I really have never really even communicated with T S P, so I don't know if it should be, I don't know if I should apply still.
Yeah, it looks like the agreement was from August first and it was amended January sixteen.
So it's probably the original and then.
So I'm thinking.
So if we table it, we have to bring it up at the next meeting, correct? It has to come up, backed up at the next meeting if we table it, yeah?
If you table something, it generally comes back to you.
Later in the meeting?
Yeah.
If you move to table at the last board meeting? For more information.
Sure. To, yeah, as I said, without Clint here, it's kind of hard to tell.
Right, we don't.
Uh, we haven't talked to him, I mean, I haven't talked to a T S P.
And you're on that committee, right?
Well, we talked to him that day, but I don't remember talking about anything like that. We just talked about the different options.
I think we shouldn't.
See, I'm gonna move the table to the March meeting, to what?
To what? Oh, to, well, to explain what it is, we don't know what it is.
Yeah, we don't want to vote on something, we don't know what it is, actually. So we have to have a motion to table? Correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to table?
Move to table this motion until.
Amendment.
Approve amendment to the professional services agreement with T S P Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions from anybody else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes the table. Eleven point six, approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendments.
Okay. I understand this. I don't know how fast you want me to go through this, basically what I do and since in June when the original budget is prepared, other than, I, I make revisions throughout the year, but when the overall budget changes, then I have to have an amendment that's approved by the board. So basically what I do is I go through and review all the revenue, review all the expenses and make any changes that I think are necessary. So if you look at the, the one sheet that just says general fund revenue budget amendment, I think it's the third sheet, it's not the overall one. It starts with general ed aid, basic skills, which I'm increasing, did you guys all find that?
Yeah.
So basically what I go, I, I go back through and look at the adjusted people units, because I have a better, better estimate now than I did in June. And I wasn't too far off, I wish I had been further off, but that's okay. Interest, interest income, I'm increasing that by ninety-four thousand, because we're getting a lot more interest than I thought we'd be getting. This unemployment reimbursement, I, I estimated high, because I didn't know how many paraprofessionals were gonna go out and seek unemployment. Plus I didn't have the code developed yet when I had to do this, the state didn't, so that's what these are. Finance six nineteen flow-through, that's money we get from the co-op, I increased that, and insurance recovery, that wasn't in the original budget. Those are the adjustments to the revenue. Next page.
Them were all green lights.
Sure, yep, green light, okay. Next page is teacher salaries and benefits, so I had, I had a estimate in the budget already for an increase, but then after we had the settlement, things changed, plus things changed when you, from June, things just changed. But overall, with, even with the budget increase that the teachers received, the salaries and benefits alone went up thirty-nine thousand, which was nice to see that also. Okay, next page, lease levy adjustment. The information that the co-op gave me was incorrect when I did the budget amendment, neither here nor there. So I reduced that expense by thirty-nine thousand. Um, concession stand, Jer's Electric Card, a concession stand, that wasn't in the original budget, I didn't know that was even, that we were gonna have that expense. Six time clocks, they were, there were six time clocks that weren't in the original budget, because Mr. Enos Salafi said, I'll get one time clock, we'll let the new superintendent decide if he wants to give more. So that's where, that's where this is at, that's why we get more time clocks. The new softball scoreboard, I increased the expense and the revenue is increased by the same amount, because we received donations, that was a Joe Doughty. So that's where that is. Elementary coordinator salary, this is for, when Jennifer became an elementary principal, it was in a contract that she would receive an additional ten thousand dollars. I didn't have that in the budget, so that's in the budget now. Next page, operations and maintenance. I had to increase it by quite a bit. And, and my explanation on here is this budget was set by the prior superintendent, the prior facilities manager. Why, why has it gone up so much? I don't know. I, I never sat down, I was not privy in that conversation. I know that the building's twenty years old and I know she's having to fix a lot of things. So I don't know if it was just, if the budget was just low-ball, I, I, I can't really give you an answer, but I know that we. But I know she's also fixing a lot of things, because if I went back and looked at possible projects for L T F M for this year, for next year, that were discussed this year, we were supposed to get a, a fi, a new fire door behind the auditorium and the S was fifteen thousand, I asked her about it and she said, well, I fixed that for three hundred and fifty dollars, we don't need a new door. So I mean, so she's doing a really good job, I, you know? So I, and her and I will sit down and work on her budget this spring, so she has a better idea and we can look at what we've spent in the past and.
Right.
So. And I think COVID kind of threw all this off too, because we spent a lot of COVID money on cleaning supplies and we don't have that COVID money anymore this year for cleaning supplies. So her and I will sit down and we'll get a better handle on it this year. So.
That's it?
And the next page, these are all the contracts with the co-op and these are just all the adjustments. Because they give me estimates also on then it all becomes actual later on, like we didn't know we were gonna hire certain people and some of our costs went up, because they couldn't find speech therapists, so they had to go out and contract with them, so then our costs went up, things like that. Okay, here we go, next page, crossing guard salaries, I left, this is my fault, I left it out of the budget. Missed that. Summer unemployment, I'm reducing that by eighty-five thousand, because I estimated that high. Additional students, we have an additional student now that's going to Children's Care Hospital, which that's gonna end up costing us an additional like a hundred and four thousand dollars, which I didn't know we were gonna have an additional student in June that was gonna be attending this year. That's it. So, and then if you look at the overall, which I was, I was kind of happy with this after I did all this work, it's like it didn't really change that much. So if you look at the very top sheet, the orig, the, the original deficit projection was a deficit of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and the new projected deficit is five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, so there wasn't a big change and it's still conservative, but I felt better about it now, just because when you go back and review it, you just have better information this time of year than you did in June. Are there any questions?
Anybody got anything for Jackie? What was it overload?
Which ones are the elementary?
That's the ones that we put in over there, across the driveway, whatever. That got moved from Brown. Or really, I mean, that was what it replaced, not really moved, but, um, yeah, I guess I didn't know that that's what we were putting, that there was gonna be electric, I mean, I didn't know, I guess I didn't realize what was all.
And other was concessions.
What?
I didn't know there was concessions out there, I guess.
I knew there was concessions standing out there, but I just guessed never.
I think they put the electrical in for future things, is what I remember. Know why, what they would put in there for concessions. Be a little shed or.
Is it, no, I thought there was one thing.
I think that.
Or my thinking.
Wrecked in the wind.
Oh, that's right.
That, then the new wall built.
That come from Brown.
It came from Brown and it got, that's right.
There's a concession out there.
Is there a concession? I was saying, I was thinking there was one over there.
Okay.
I think you were thinking that, I think the, something else got wrecked out.
I think it was the dugouts, the gun wreck.
Yeah, it was, something got wrecked in the wind, but it was. But a little green shed sitting out there, isn't it?
That's the.
Yeah, that's a concession.
Yes, you're right, the other ones got wrecked in the wind.
Yeah.
You say time clock, I'm thinking like punching in a time clock.
That would be, that's the time clock.
That is.
Yes.
Six of those is twenty-one thousand.
That's correct.
Why do we need those for the fields?
No, this isn't the field.
Oh, I'm, I'm like a. Well, that's why I was like, I'm very confused at what the, what we're talking about.
Not a normal time clock.
We switch to do a different.
I'm hoping that.
It's all integrated, it's all integrated into.
Integrated onto the payroll system.
You're right, it's integrated payroll. You're right, it's integrated payroll. It's not like one where I, when I worked at Cobra, you punch in, no, this is all integrated into.
Jackie's old screen out.
Well, that's what I'm thinking I'll do.
I remember I had one where it stamped your time on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a timestamp. That staged me too. Okay.
We still use it at work, so they're pretty reasonable.
No more questions.
They're right, right. It works, you get paid.
I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Been made in second to approve the twenty twenty-four budget amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Eleven point seven, proposed adding volleyball varsity assistant coach to certified master agreement to start twenty twenty-four, twenty-five season. Questions, anyone?
Do most, or do they, all the rest of the sports have an assistant coach? I know softball does. I know football, I'm assuming does.
Sometimes assistants, something could be made, but I.
That's what it means.
So is that, I know Brad Carson was in on this meeting in that email that. Is this different than, it's like the B squad coach, so it'll be like a head coach, assistant, B squad for a freshman? Is that what I'm getting? I, it's my understanding is, I thought Mr. Zolmer was gonna be here too.
He was over there.
And if you look in the back of the master agreement, you know, that page where it lists everything, it'll show, it shows like.
I see what you're saying, it lists them all.
Right, yeah.
See her, Deb?
He's not going to swing. I thought he was gonna pop in after the meeting.
I seen him walk by. We'll get that robot warmed up, about there. Think I can drive it with one leg?
Yeah. And doesn't, like that master agreement, doesn't it, aren't some of those things dependent on how many people or how many students there is involved? Jack's not listening.
Jack.
Jack.
We have a question.
Okay.
Okay, Z, they got questions of why are we adding a varsity assistant? Do we do this in other sports?
So, yep, you know, we've had varsity assistants for football since before I got here. And, um, at one point, we added baseball and softball. Mostly because, um, you know, the sports, when you break down your sport, it's not like in football, everyone's a running back. Or in baseball, everyone's a catcher. So in volleyball, it's the same way. You have your middle hitters, you have your outside hitters, you have setters. So when you're at practice, you know, your head coach is only working with one group of his at a time. The B squad coach, which I think in the contract they call assistant coach, is really the B squad coach. She's with her team. And then your C squad coach is with her team. So David suggested maybe having another coach. And I, I think in a, in a sport, when you break it down and have lots of, you know, individual parts to it, it's a good thing.
Okay.
And does some of those, these, I can't remember on the master agreement, are they dependent on how many students are involved or no?
Well, it depends which superintendent was working at the time, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I would say when, you know, when Bob was working and, um, it was in the old days, he always had, he had some kind of a number.
Okay.
Um, last, uh, two years ago, I think it was with Kevin, he was like, I don't really look at the number of positions. If there's a need, then, then we fill the position. So he was, you know, almost completely opposite of what, of what we had done in the past.
Okay. So do we need, um, making a master agreement that they're a varsity assistant and not a B squad to make, so we don't have this problem?
I, I, I do think that at some point, and I don't know how they want to work that in the contract. It should be listed differently than what it is. It should be listed as a B squad and a C squad instead of assistant. And then this position or, um, would be listed as a varsity assistant. Just to have a little more continuity, you're right, would be, would be better for this.
Okay, so then we don't have this happen again, so.
Well, and there's no confusion on what position and what the percentage is for pay. And, you know, and those kinds of things, yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thanks, Z.
You bet.
Yep, bye. Everybody got that understood? I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Even like in, like in wrestling, I mean, you got many different kids and how many coaches they would need, yeah.
Wrestling has an assistant.
Football, I mean, there's.
Baseball.
Lots, lots.
Lots and lots of stuff. You know, if you had basketball, if you had thirty, forty kids between varsity and B squad, that, B squad coach has to step down and take care of his, his or her kids and.
Do they, does volleyball, uh, uh, does, does volleyball currently have volunteers that help out?
They have one that comes in every once in a while, but.
Whoever volunteers is approved by the board.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody was approved. I, we didn't have any approved ones last year that I know of. I don't think there was any. That I can remember, I'd have to look back, but. Like volunteers were on your, and some of them were trapped, I mean, they're listed like. Right. Any sport, so I, like I said, I don't remember if there was a, but, yeah, I don't think I've ever remembered.
I think it would be hard for a volunteer to be step into that type of role.
Well, yeah.
It's pretty good as far as general health.
There's a lot of moving parts with volleyball, with rotations, those rotations can be pretty confusing. I mean, someone in the overlapping.
Well, and what I don't like about volunteers is sometimes that brings up a whole different, like a whole different problem to a lot of things sometimes too. People that want to be volunteers, that want to come in and kind of, put their opinion out there to the coaches. I mean, I, I know that we've had issues with volunteers in the past too, so, I mean, that's not always, uh, I'm not saying it's not good that we have volunteers, but it just can sometimes make it hard.
I don't know, I think we should go by the recommendation of our athletic activities director, that's, who's an administrator and.
And if the others. That was actually a whole committee that reviewed.
It was Brad, Clint.
To what his email says.
Z, I believe. Brad, Clint and Z, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody else was in that one. I know there was three of them.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed adding volleyball varsity assistant coach to certified master agreement to start the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five season?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to number twelve, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, first and second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, pose same sign. Meeting's over.